Good afternoon. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present this afternoon. We did not have anybody register for public comments. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the November 1st, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jaco.
Jamie Averwater.
Aye.
Bridgette Harris.
Aye.
Chase Solis.
Aye.
Sean Wright.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ken Halliburton.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay. I believe I left off that this is the November 15th, 2023, meeting of the Marshall Planning Commission. We also have the consent agenda that we will need to make a motion on if everybody had a chance to review that prior to the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Jaco.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Chase Solis.
Aye.
And Sean Wright.
Aye.
And I.
Chair Jones.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to our GDO section. Our first item of business in there is the Robert Rose Village West re-subdivision of Lot 4 and second re-subdivision of Lot 2, final plat for three lots and a common area on 13.7 acres, zoned PUD and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway, Maple Grove Drive, and Robert Rose Drive. TDK Land LLC is the developer. Ms. Aguilera, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones, thank you. As said, the first item of our agenda today under the GDO portion of our agenda is the Robert Rose Village West re-sub plat. This is a final plat review for the Robert Rose Village West re-subdivision of Lot 4, second re-subdivision of Lot 2. It is depicted on your screens if you want to see and review what attachment, what plat has been submitted. The property is zoned PUD and...
Hey Joel, can I stop you? We don't have screens on.
Want me to paint you a picture? I can do that as well.
Yep, you got a marker?
Yeah.
It's a verbal picture.
What's going on?
Okay, everybody good? Except for the one up top, huh?
Okay, good. Otherwise, I'm gonna be flying blind.
We got it.
Okay, perfect. So, as said, this is, the property is zoned PUD and GDO 1. This is, of course, the TDK property which became, which came before you for rezoning, recently rezoning application back in October when it was approved by the Planning Commission and has since went on to City Council, was approved as well as City Council. Property is zoned PUD and GDO 1. The purpose of this re-sub plat is to re-subdivide two lots of record to create three lots of record, as you can see is depicted on the plat, to dedicate common access, common area access drive, as seen on here on the plat, and to dedicate new easements as well. There were several comments made by staff that the applicant is aware of. A number of them are, a majority of them are procedural comments. They are depicting abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement as well as repurified waterline easement. Those, of course, will be required to submit a mandatory referral application for that, to, for those easements to be properly abandoned. And so, we have made the applicant aware of that, of that procedure. But beyond that, the comments made for this plat were very minor. There are still several things, as noted on the staff report, that still need to be corrected, but of course, that are minor. The plat overall, in general, is in good shape. Beyond these comments that the applicant will need to address, and staff recommends that any approval of this final plat be made, subject to staff comments.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding this final plat?
If there are none, I move for approval.
Second.
Subject to all staff comments.
Thank you. Motion and a second, Ms. Jaco.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Aguilera.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next item is Robert Rose Village West, GDO master plan amendment and preliminary plat for four lots on 12.5 acres, zoned CH, PUD, and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. TDK Land LLC is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you, Planning Commission. Our next item is for you to consider an amendment to an existing master plan for property located south of Medical Center Parkway and between Robert Rose Drive and Maple Grove Drive. You can see the area on the screen before you. The original master plan for this property was approved in 2013. It was later amended in 2015 for a potential movie theater. This master plan is probably familiar to many of you because it was also a subject of discussion for the zoning change that was made for part of the property. Because we do have existing master plans approved by the Planning Commission, this today is a master plan amendment, but it does only affect most of the northern half of the property. So, on the screen, you have the entire area, including the Everwood Apartments, but the specific amendment deals with just these lots that you see on the screen. So, the one on the corner, Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, and then the three to the south. The existing McAllisters, which was approved as a Peter D's restaurant, is not a part of the amendment, although it is a part of the overall master plan area. So, just the area requesting amendment today is 12.4, 12.5 acres, but the overall area is 37.5. To be consistent with the plan development, that the Planning Commission, City Council recently reviewed and approved, this was necessary, and so what they're showing to you is mostly consistent with that, that plan development document that you received. There are some additional comments that we had that the team will need to work on, but we believe that's something that is de minimis in nature and probably can be done after approvals today if you do decide to approve this, subject to all staff comments. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, otherwise, it's a recommendation that it be approved, subject to comments.
Okay, any questions?
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jaco.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay. Our next item is also Robert Rose Village West, Lot 5, initial design review of a 14,500 square foot grocery store located on 2.4 acres, zoned commercial highway and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. TDEC Land LLC is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you. Our next item is a companion to the previous two items in that it's for one of the lots that were a part of the master plan amendment and the final plat that you just reviewed. On the screen, you can see the area, and what you may notice is that Lot 5, which is here, is showing on our zoning map, it's being zoned CH, Commercial Highway District, because that is what it's zoned today. There's a pending application to change the zoning to PUD. We anticipate that it'll become effective November 17th, so after today's meeting, but it did have public hearings at both Planning Commission, City Council levels, and both bodies did recommend approval of that zoning. So, we took the plans and reviewed it as if it were zoned PUD, even though it's not. And you may have looked at the plans and saw that they don't comply with a lot of our standards for commercial highway, but they are consistent with the, was submitted. And so, here's an ortho photo of the property, and you can see that the lot lines don't exist, but the property is located on that intersection of Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. The lot, or the property, when it was approved, received several exceptions to our design standards, not only the site layout, but the architecture. So, one of the things that you may notice when you look at the building is that it doesn't comply with our, several of our gateway standards. And I'll pull up the image. For one, the building is mostly cementitious siding and not brickstone or rock like the GDO requires in the zoning ordinance. It's also got white as a primary color, which is a bright and vibrant color and doesn't have the void space calculations. However, that was part of the, the zoning, the PUD zoning, so it is consistent with what was shown in the book, and those exceptions were written in as a part of that PUD. It's just, when we look at the other applications today, they may have different designs, so you could understand why this building looks different than maybe other buildings. That's because it was written into the PUD. So, I'll turn, I'll circulate to you the material board, so you can see that up close, and I'll come back and finish. So, initial design is today, and the primary goal is to get feedback about architecture. As I mentioned, the site did have some preliminary feedback already during the zoning, and so they think that what they're presenting to you is consistent, and we staff believes is consistent too with that PUD that you saw in the zoning process. Site plan approval will come when they make an application for final design review, which we expect will be next month. But go ahead and give you an opportunity to look at the plans as they've submitted them today. There you are. This is Lot 5. One of the staff comments was that the drives that you see here are actually on their own separate lots of record, and so Lot 5 will not have access unless the common area lot is constructed. So, when this comes back to you, there will be a site plan for the adjacent common area lots, and those will actually be constructed in tandem with the site, so the site will have access. So, you're looking at it, it doesn't have any, access any of the roads, but when it comes back next month, you'll see that there's another site plan that will actually give it access to the roads and will be consistent with the PUD. The, let's see, the site is designed so the front of the building is oriented toward Medical Center Parkway, which is a street with a higher functioning classification because it's a major arterial. And of course, it's on a corner lot, so it also has high visibility from Robert Rose Drive and actually has a reduced setback there, so it's a little closer to Robert Rose Drive than maybe some of the other buildings might be. The lot exceeds our minimum parking standards here, and so there, it does meet and exceed what is required in the zoning ordinance and also what's shown in the PUD. I did have a couple of comments about the site, just wanted Planning Commission's feedback on a couple of items. One was that I wanted your feedback on the number of bollards that are proposed, only because the conversation was had with 7-Eleven and with the daycare and a couple of their uses, asking for them to reduce the bollards. So, they were able to reduce them from like two per space to, I think, one per space, so now they're every nine feet. And so, just want to make sure that that is consistent with what you expect to see in the area, and then also asked for some feedback, if you had any, about the cart corrals, if you believe they were consistent. One of the, this use is a grocery store, but ironically, our zoning ordinance says that doesn't have the use grocery store listed, has retail, so technically, it's a retail use in our zoning ordinance. And so, but with being a grocery store, you have grocery carts because you need, I mean, it's just a function of the use. And so, the GDO doesn't anticipate any outdoor storage. However, there was an exception written in the zoning to allow the carts to be stored outside, which is something that you would need with a grocery store, and I just wanted Planning Commission to give us any direction, if you had any regarding the style of those. I think initially, when the team met with us, they talked about maybe doing something like Publix does, which is curbs around it and a little bit recessed, but I think the design today is just metal tubing, and the applicant may be able to provide more information on it. Otherwise, the plan, we believe, is in relatively good order. We would ask that you provide us any feedback you have and approve an initial design review for us to bring back to you next month.
Okay. What questions you have for Ms. Green and any comments regarding the items she was asking for?
Are we getting a presentation or no?
I think Mr. Taylor was hoping you'd ask.
I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor.
I think Ms. Green did a good job going over the site. I think it's very consistent with what you saw in the PUD or PCD, whichever one we called it, been very consistent with that. And so, we've got the architect, as well as my client here as well, think there's some color elevations. These may be strictly identical to what was inside the book, might be a little variation as we went through the site plan review process. But the top here would be what would face Medical Center Parkway, and then the, this one, or sorry, this one would face Robert Rose, Robert Rose Drive.
So, Ms. Green mentioned the whole, this bollard, it sounds like you addressed that.
Yes, so we've got, our tenant's criteria is really bollards, closer than what we show them. I think they started, like Ms. Green said, at about every five feet or so. We've reduced those working with the tenant and with staff down to really one per about every nine feet. I think that's very similar to what you'd see in front of Race Track, almost across the street from here, so if they're not correctly, they, you know, they'll blend in. I went to Race Track several times myself, and I don't think it, I don't think it detracts from the building, so, so I think that's about the same spacing.
I am very happy that the cart storage at the building is on the west side. I'm really happy about that, but how many areas? I don't, I only see one, maybe two for parking lot.
There's one there and one there, and so they're relatively small. I don't know if there's a picture inside the staff comments or not, but...
It's there.
Don't look at the screen, you'll get whiplash.
Mr. Taylor, they can look prettier than that.
So, this is the one that would be in the, what I'd call to the west of the store, and then the one that's to the north of the store will be recessed and into the island there. Really just has to do with where it falls inside the parking lot.
So, Mr. Taylor, am I correct in my understanding that one of the cart corrals will be recessed and have like curbs, kind of like the Publix, for instance, on Memorial, and one will be this aluminum tube style? Is that right?
Yes, so this one right here, that's the wider one out in the parking lot itself, and then the one that's to the north will actually have some recess. I think it's actually, it'll still have this element to it, but it will have the recessed curbs because it's inside the landscape island.
Okay.
And I don't remember if Publix has, I know it has the recessed curb, I don't remember if it has the tube around it or not.
It doesn't, it just has the curves and, yeah.
I would personally kind of like to see that done here as well, just because of where it at, where it is in the GDO. If there's a, if there's at all an opportunity to do that.
We can, we appreciate you guys.
Mr. Bradley, welcome.
Hey there. Ross Bradley, TDK, 1610 South Church Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can certainly talk to them. I think the reason why you're seeing the differences here is because they had a certain capacity of carts that they needed available to have in that parking lot area. The other challenge that we're working with is the number of parking spaces that the tenant would like to try to maintain.
Sure.
And so, the first one that we put in was kind of in an island, so we didn't have to be concerned about parking spaces. This one is kind of right in the middle of a parking bay, and so, we had some limitations as far as being able to use that same application here in this other spot as we did with the one in the island, just because of the number of parking spaces. We don't want to lose a parking space for it, so we can certainly look at different styles, but I think this is, this is the, this is kind of the standard that is in our lease with the tenant, and that's how, that's where we have this inventory.
So, Ross, what are you telling us? I mean, are you saying that you can, you can change it or you can't change it?
I'm just gonna have to go back to the drawing board with them and see if we can, what we can do. Is this something, since we just have one of them, is this something that this body feels like we can live with one, or is this something we need to go back to the drawing board and try to, try to reevaluate it? I'll tell you this, this is what's in our lease, and this, this is what's been currently approved in our lease, so we'll have to go back to them and renegotiate that aspect of it. I just, I don't, I'm not sure what that's gonna look like at this point.
I can live with it.
I cannot, I'm sorry.
What if we put a horse out there?
Then I'm a hard no.
A golden horse.
A hard no, Mr. Taylor. I just think it can be prettier. I think that the outside, the architecture of this is really nice, and I think the metal poles is, I mean, when was the last time we approved a commercial center or a grocery store with this look? I mean, the Walmart on Fortress doesn't even have these, so...
Both have these.
My only concern is, I'm not sure how we maintain the number of carts they have by getting it in, if we put curbing up, let's say, and we put some type of, of structure with walls on it, then we're gonna have to create some type of barricade to prevent cars from being able to run into it. I'm just, I, that's something we're really gonna have to dig into, because I don't know how we do it without losing parking spaces.
But you're saying, let me make sure I understand, you're saying that you do have the curbs with respects to the cart corral that is in the area facing Medical Center, you're just saying that this metal piece is gonna look like this on the west side? Is that a correct statement?
Pull up the site plan, mind, do you know how to do that?
Yeah.
We can show you where they're all located, and you can kind of see the... So, the first one, this is the one that's in the, in the island that we have, I think somebody referenced, the Publix cart corral. This is the, that was, that was kind of our, our design idea going into that one, because we can do it into the curb. That makes perfect sense there. The other one is in the parking lot here, and so, if you, if you see it, it's right in the middle of the parking area. And so, if we were to go to a different style and try to, to put some type of walled structure on it like the other one, or put some type of curb on it, I'm concerned that we're gonna end up losing, losing parking spaces to get all that to fit, because they have a minimum width they have to have on those in order to get a double bay of park, of carts in there, and so, that's, that's my concern there.
And that is the, like the easement, basically, or the lot that we're talking about that's gonna be the access between these two lots? Is that correct, is what we're looking at?
Yeah, that's correct.
And so, at the end of the, this, where you are showing that particular parking corral, is that a parking island on the end that's gonna have landscaping in both of those?
Talking about...
Now, over to, to the west of that, to the left of that?
This one and that will have landscaping in the end just... And then there'll also be landscaping that will run along the perimeter there.
And right there at the other entrance, so it's kind of, hopefully...
It's gonna be...
It's a good barrier to, even though you can see that from the street, that's not even really a public street, it's the access street. So, I feel better about that. And where is the other one?
There's one against the building as well here.
Uh-huh.
And it is, we've tried to integrate that into the building, so we're using some of the same materials that we are using on the building. It's almost hard to see it on the elevation because of that.
And that's still landscaping in front of that as well, is that correct?
It's landscaped and fully screened with a masonry, I think that's a brick there. Yeah, so, see, that's the car corral there.
Yeah, I think that looks good. I mean, I'm looking at the Costco one, though, and even it, even though it's metal, so it can be moved, adjusted as needed, it still looks more intentional and looks more permanent than that one. I mean, that one looks like I could, I could push it with my bike.
So, you'd prefer to have maybe more walled, like a, some type of, it can be a...
Just more of a structure.
Something that's already predetermined, something...
Yeah. If I can pick it up, it's probably not sturdy enough.
We can, we, how about this, how about we look at a structure and just tell them that we need something that has walls on it for additional screening? Does that...
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
I don't even know that the Costco one has walls, but I think it's, I think it's still metal, which I'm sure is more affordable, but it looks more intentional.
Yeah.
And maybe that's just a really bad picture that was put in the staff comments, but that one looks...
This was straight out of our, of our lease with them, so...
Yeah.
What they had spec, but if we can, I can certainly go, if we say we like the one at Costco and it fits in the parking space, I don't have a problem going with something more like that style.
That, that would make me feel so much better. I don't think you need to build a big building for the carts or anything, but, you know, if this landscaping is trimmed back for the winter, or if it's not very tall, and you're driving down Medical Center at night or early in the morning, it's just, yeah.
We're, we're still gonna own all that property behind, so we certainly want it to look, look nice as well.
I know you do.
Yeah, and I don't wanna, just, Ms. Averwater, if, maybe I could peek at what you're looking at, because to me, it sounds like we're putting something that draws more attention to it if you're beefing it up. I mean, I get it that the little aluminum poles don't look, but do you mind showing me what you're...
I'll try to show a better picture. Costco...
I don't wanna try to fix the problem and draw more attention to the...
I guess I just go to Costco more than you do.
I've never been.
Really? Okay, so it, it can, I'm sorry, you can kind of see, they're just sturdier poles in the ground, but they could still move them and adjust them.
Like a wall.
Yes, it's not like a wall.
All right, all right, all right.
Got it.
I just didn't want to make it worse, but...
So, is the consensus try to, try to move something more towards the Costco one that still fits in the space? Are you familiar with that? I have to go look that up.
Y'all don't go to Costco?
I'm usually worried about dollar hot dogs when I go.
Any other?
Pretty similar.
We just need to make sure that it fits within the parking space.
Which one is that?
That's Costco.
That's Lowe's, babe.
No, 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 sorry. I was on the service case.
That's also Lowe's. All right, well, seeing things.
Costco's is just like that, too.
Were there other, any other feedback regarding this initial design review?
Madam Chair, I did want to bring up one thing that, you know, as, as Ms. Green mentions, the initial design review is primarily about architecture, and the site plan is, is one of the things you'll be looking at, at final design review, but I did just want to mention for the record that our public infrastructure team will be having ongoing conversations with, with the design team and the applicants about potential improvements to Robert Rose Drive between now and final design review.
Okay, Matthew, I get it. I won't, I won't harp on the cart corral. I'll stick to the architecture.
No, no, that is not what I meant. I just wanted to make sure I got that on the record for...
I'll feedback, it's good feedback, so... Any other comments or questions or...
All right, I'll make a motion. We approve, subject to all staff comments, and the fact that we'll work on the cart corral piece.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jaco.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris. Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay. So, next, we are moving on to Clary Park. This is Lot 13, it'll be Drake's. It's an initial design review of a 6,381 square foot restaurant located on 2.3 acres, zoned commercial highway and GDO 1, located along Robbie Corlou Lane. Bluegrass Hospitality Group is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. Our next item is another initial design review, and it's for Lot 13, the Clary Park Development, and each month, we have a different project to bring to you that's in this development as it builds out. On the screen is an ortho photo, and this Drake's lot is this lot here, and so you can see it's along Robbie Corlou Lane, adjacent to a funny shaped parcel, which is a pocket park, the subject of the next item, and it's located adjacent to the apartments, which have received permits, I believe, or under construction. Across from Drake's is the proposed PF Chang's, so hopefully that gives you some orienting, orientation to the, the site. And this, this property is zoned CH, Commercial Highway District. There's a lot here. I have here showing you a master plan of the developments that have been approved, and of course, this is in your packet if you'd like to reference it, and so you can see which lots have, site plans are approved for them and which ones are still pending, coming to you, and the Drake's property again is here. And the Drake's property, again, is here. The way the site's been organized is to push the building as close to the pocket park as can be, considering the existing easements and setbacks that apply to the property. And so that funny-shaped parcel is the pocket park that we'll look at next. All the parking is located between the building and to the west, which is a future hotel site. And along the north, you can see a shared access drive that's located on the apartment site. So the parking on the top of the page, that's not shaded gray but white, is parking that's being constructed as part of the apartments. To the south is Robbie Corleau Lane, which is a new public street that's being dedicated by the developers, Heinz. And currently, it's constructed, and there's some on-street parking there. Based on the plans, there will be some modifications to the on-street parking, but it'll look largely like what you see today. Let me see if I have an image. The Clary Park PUD has a linear park that runs along Robbie Corleau Lane that has a wider path and amenities along the streetscape to serve not only the residential developments, but the people within the development. That path is 10-foot wide, multi-use path. There is a transit stop here, of course, trees and benches and site furnishings. Throughout this development, the formal open spaces of each lot are incorporating the same finestrations that are in that linear park, with the same pavers, the same bench types, and the same lighting throughout the developments, and so you'll see some of that here. Today's initial design review, where the team is hoping to get feedback regarding the architecture from you, so this is the first time you're seeing this use, and I know that they'll wanna come up and share their business with you in just a moment. Drake's is a restaurant where you can go dine in, or you can get food to go, but it does not have a drive-through. And so it isn't one of the fast-food concepts that we see in Clary Park. It does have a connection to the outdoor park next door, and so I guess it's conceivable that somebody may go there as well. When we were looking at the site layout, there's some images, we asked for the design team to consider where they locate the dumpster and other infrastructure, because there are apartments to the north where people live. And so you can see here that the dumpster's actually located here, and there was no other place that they said that they could put it, just because of where their employees need to go to serve that. There is outdoor dining here, and the site provides enough parking for all interior seats and all seats proposed within the outdoor dining area, so it does meet that standard. There are to-go spaces along the front of the building as well. Those to-go spaces are not included in the parking, the minimum parking calculations that are being provided here, and so they do exceed our standards. In the gateway, the standards are that the building has to be primarily brick, stone, or rock. It's not primarily cementitious siding, it's brick, stone, or rock specifically, and as you know, the gateway's where we have an elevated design standard. So here you have a building that does have two types of brick, and I'll pass this around. There's a mortar sample that comes loose, and I'll get it from you if it falls out, but I'll pass this around, and I'll ask their team to come up. There are Civils here and there are Architects here as well to present the design and concept to you, and if you have any questions from me, I'll be glad to answer them. And I'll go ahead and bring this to you, invite the team to introduce yourselves and the project.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Layman. I'm with Nykirk Engineering. I'm the Civil Engineer on the project. As Ms. Green said, we have the other design team here and the representative from the owner, and they'll be happy to speak about their items if you have any questions about that. But as far as the site goes, as Ms. Green said, we have plenty of parking throughout the site. We decided to relocate the dumpster where it was to ensure that the employees did not have to walk across the parking lot, because it is a rather large parking lot to put garbage into the trash enclosure. We're ensuring that it is screened very well, so it's not encompassing onto the apartment parking lot. The building and the landscape, we're using the same landscape architect that is doing the pocket park next door, so a lot of the, it's all gonna be with the same type of plants and feeling that the pocket park is. And there's, yeah, like I said, there's plenty of parking, and if you have any questions about anything else, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, any questions? And then are we, you're the Civil, right?
I am, yes.
I'm more concerned about the brick, all the brick, all the same color.
Hey, I'm Casey Cuffner. This is the team here, working with Architects, so if you had questions on the brick.
Thank you, yes. I just was, I felt like, it looks like maybe you're trying to put some variation in there. I mean, I realize it's all the same color with the little darker panels going through there, or lines going around the building. I guess just the pictures, you know, and I'm probably not seeing the variation, because this drawing that we're looking at looks more like there's some...
Does that help?
That helps, so just those doors have the herringbone pattern on them, and...
So we've added void spaces to the flat portions of the facade to give, and it is turned in a herringbone pattern with a row lock around it. Just to break up the large, large flat panels. The black brick, which is the other, is the accent at the base, and then through the midpoint of the building.
Are those doors, are they, are those doors? And how are they, how's that gonna be, oh, they're not doors, okay.
Yes, they just have some sort of lights or...
I'm with you.
...back there in the middle that...
Okay.
There are garage doors.
There are garage doors all along the, for the outdoor side.
Yeah.
Can I see the material board again? Please? I see, okay, sorry, I didn't see the gray. I didn't know where that went. Okay. Does anyone else wanna see this? I think it looks great.
It's a nice building.
It is.
Renderings and elevations don't do them justice. This group builds a really good quality, good quality food, good quality building as well, so...
Are those the awnings down through there? Are those, is that awnings coming out from the, over the windows?
At the front, yes, to define, a little bit more, define the entry.
Uh-huh, okay.
They appear to be decorative, right? No seating underneath them?
Seating underneath them.
Metal or fabric?
Those are fabric, black fabric.
Okay. All right, any further questions or comments? This is the initial design review.
Darnan, I'll make a motion. We approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Thank you, appreciate it. Our next item is Clary Park Pocket Park. It is initial and final design review of a common area pocket park located on 0.27 acres, zoned CH and GDO-1, located along Honey Locust Lane and Robbie Corleau Lane. Heinz Clary Park Land Holdings LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This final GDO item for you this afternoon is for a pocket park that's shown in the Clary Park Master Plan and the Clary Park PUD. I included just a couple sheets from that PUD book so that it can serve maybe as a refresher, since there was a lot of information in it, and it was some time ago. This is just an excerpt of the Green Space Connections Master Plan, and you can see on this, it's a linear park that runs along the north side of Robbie Corleau, and then there are some elements that are shown here. This is the pocket park, and then just to the north is what's in the apartments. And so the image for the pocket park is here, and I'll go to blow up in just a moment to show you what the image looked like when it was in the zoning stage of the project. So here is the image, which is conceptual in nature, but it was what was included with the plan development.
Where's the pocket park?
I really love this tool, as you can see. And then what you see as, like, bocana and some other concept is actually the Drake's that you just reviewed, and so this is all Drake's.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, it's the whole thing is Drake's?
The whole thing is Drake's, it's not, several uses are shown here. So you can see that it looks a little bit different than the illustrative versions and the plan development showed, but this pocket park concept does show seating area, teeny tiny little stage, and then lighting and stuff. And so when you see the plan, which is on the next sheet, this is another image of the same. Here, this is what is being proposed today as the pocket park. So Drake's is this building. They have a sidewalk connection at this point, and so there's a linear park along Robbie Corleau, which is to the south, and there'll be a sidewalk connection to the apartments to the north. The image that had the landscaping wasn't available to put in the packet, but there's some landscaping in the area, and I think two benches, maybe three benches. Reagan Smith, who worked with the Clary, the Heinz development, when they were developing the Clary Park plans, also worked on the landscape plan for this. And I can invite Mr. Hamilton to the lectern to go through the elements of this plan. One of the items that I asked for was that according to the PUD, historic marker location and potential public art along the Clary Lane corridor were to be implemented with a Green Space Connection. And so with this stage, they don't have any public art to present to you, but they are interested in adding a historical marker. And so the response to that comment is that a historical marker commemorating Bill Gatten, or those of us who've been here a long time, Chair Jones, Wild Bill Gatten, and his legacy to the Murfreesboro Gateway is proposed as part of the development of this pocket park, and they're confirming the language with the Gatten Foundation. And so they do have a plaque proposed with this development. And I'll invite Mr. Hamilton to the lectern to provide any additional information, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
My name is Matt Hamilton. I'm with Reagan Smith, 1500 Medical Center Parkway. We're involved in this project. We're tying in a lot of the elements from the linear park. We're matching the brick pavers, the veneer on the walls, the monument signage. Would be similar to the benches and the seat wall that we're proposing here. We're matching the pergola to the apartments just to the north. We see this being a place that, after dinner for anybody in Clary Park, could come, kinda socialize, maybe have concerts at the stage, have lawn games. We are proposing a seat wall. I'm not exactly sure how to draw on this, but if you see just north of that circular plaza, those are, be two levels of seat walls overlooking the stage, and then the plaza that would have the historical marker for Bill Gatten. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hamilton? Okay. Any further questions for Ms. Green?
Darnan, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. All right, next, we are moving on to Plats and Plans. Our first item is Parkway Place, Lot 10. It's Ferguson Enterprises, a site plan for a 15,560-square-foot office warehouse building on 4.5 acres, zoned PID. It's the Parkway Place PID Region 2. It's located along Richard Reeves Drive. Ferguson Enterprises LLC is the developer. And Mr. Blomley?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission, filling in for Ms. Smith today. This site plan is for a new Ferguson office and warehouse building. You know, Ferguson, the national plumbing supply business, we already have one location here in Murfreesboro. This is an office, warehouse, and outdoor storage area. The use is permitted in the Parkway Place Planned Industrial District. The plans are in good order. There are just a few outstanding comments. The reason this is before you today as opposed to being approved administratively is that in the planned industrial development, there's the requirement that site plans in this development go before you for approval, specifically as it relates to the architecture. But the architecture is consistent with the requirements of the Planned Industrial District Pattern Book. If the Cable Department could go to my laptop screen... Yeah, I've got the elevations pulled up, if they could pull that up on the screens on the dais. There we go. Thank you. You can see it's a mixture of brick and integrated metal panels, and it's compliant with the PID zoning. There are just a handful of outstanding comments, not many. Plans, so the plans are generally in good order, and we would ask that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments. I spoke with Mr. Taylor before the meeting, and he and his client have no objection to these plans being approved, the remaining staff comments.
Anybody have any questions or concerns that need to be addressed on this site plan?
Darnan, I'll make a motion. We approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Next item is Creekwood Resubdivision of Lot 33, final lot for two lots on 1.2 acres, zoned RD, located along Carriage Drive and Caroline Drive. Elizabeth Ray is the developer.
Madam Chair, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna save Mr. Aguilar from getting out of his seat. We received an email from the surveyor just about an hour before. He's still working with his client on the exact location of the new property line on this plat, so he sent an email requesting that y'all defer action. So if we could have a motion on this to defer action on this plat, I would appreciate it.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, next, we are moving on to new business. First item, we have a zoning application for approximately 48.3 acres located along Old Fort Parkway to be rezoned from Commercial Highway and PSO to PCD, Stones River Town Center, PCD, and PSO. Kim Lee Horn, representing Sterling Organization, is the applicant. Ms. Kerr, good afternoon.
Thank you, Chair Jones, members of the Planning Commission. First zoning application for today is for Stones River Town Center. The subject property consists of six parcels located along Old Fort Parkway, Stones River Boulevard, and Mall Circle Drive. The property included in the zoning map amendment request is for a total of 48.3 acres and is developed with the Stones River Mall. Of the six parcels, three are already independently owned parcels, and they are included in the applicant's request. J.C. Penney's, Miller's Owl House, and Olive Garden are included as additional study areas by the city of Murfreesboro, since they are a part of the Stones River Mall development. The property is currently zoned CH and planned signa overlay. The subject property is located north of Old Fort Parkway and is east of the Home Depot Store and Old Fort Park to the north and the east. The existing AMC Theater has expressed a desire to own the property their business is located on, but is unable to meet minimum rear setbacks and landscaping requirements in order to resubdivide. The request for rezoning to plan commercial development is to create separate lots for the existing AMC building. See if I can find that page real quick. Which is going to be this Lot 4... Which is going to be this Lot 4, and then also for a future building of Lot 5, which is on the south side of the property. And the ability to provide future subdivisions within the context of the Stones River Mall development. If the plan development is approved, subdivided parcels will be governed by the proposed PCD as well as the private declarations of the Stones River Town Center, including shared parking and cross-access easement and agreements. Stones River Town Center development has two primary points of access from Old Fort Parkway, which is a public major arterial roadway on the southeastern, southwestern corners of the overall development. Stones River Mall and Mall Circle Drive are commercial public collector roadways and border the east, north, and west sides of the development and provide multiple access into the surrounding parking areas of the development. The plan book does identify two exceptions, landscaping exception for the interior perimeter planting yards, and the rear setback to be zero as opposed to what is required of the 20-foot per the zoning ordinance. The future land use map that has been adopted classifies this area as commercial general. This designation pertains to commercial developments as well as out parcels located on aerial and collector transportation routes, although urban commercial uses and high-intensity commercial businesses that have trade areas outside of Murfreesboro and/or require large amounts of land for their operations. Uses like the regional shopping centers would be a characteristic of the general commercial characteristics. Due to the potential for these to generate high-traffic volumes, their locations should be on adequate access to arterial roadways. The existing mall development is consistent with the general character, land use character, and the proposed PCD. Zoning continues to allow the mall and its various uses by right. Staff is supportive of this request and intend to allow additional flexibility in order to help this development to be successful in an ever-changing retail landscape. Staff requests the Planning Commission to consider following items in its review, the proposed development type and characteristics, which are consistent with the approved Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map. Second being, the Planning Commission should consider the appropriateness of the exceptions as part of the plan development. Kimberly Horn, representing the applicant, are here and available to discuss the proposed rezoning request and answer any questions that you may have. A copy of the planned commercial development has been included with your agenda materials today, and the Planning Commission should schedule a public hearing to consider the matter. Staff recommends a public hearing date of December the 6th, 2023, and I am available to answer any questions as well as Kimberly Horn representatives.
Ms. Kerr, to Lot 4 and Lot 5, park itself, meaning, or is there a parking agreement with the rest of the mall?
There is a parking agreement. It's gonna be tweaked a little bit before this is finalized, but it is a shared parking agreement as well as cross-access easements.
Any other questions or comments before we schedule a public hearing?
If there are none, I'll make a motion, schedule a public hearing for December the 6th.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay. Our next item is a zoning application for approximately 7.3 acres located along Northwest Broad Street and West Vine Street to be rezoned from CH and CCO to PUD and CCO, and approximately 0.1 acres to be rezoned from CBD and CCO to PUD and CCO, and approximately 0.4 acres to be rezoned from CH and CCO to CBD and CCO. HRP Residential is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Ms. Noel was so excited to present about the EV parking spaces. I think Mr. Prince's enthusiasm was contagious.
Okay.
I'm just sad that Mr. Prince isn't here to hear her presentation. Our second item under new business is the rezoning request for the Keystone on Broad zoning request for the property, the city-owned property framing City Hall on its south and east sides. The property is currently zoned a combination of Commercial Highway and Central Business District, primarily Commercial Highway, and it's also in the City Core overlay district. The Commercial Highway zone does not permit the amount of uses or the type of uses that are proposed, and it's, the uniqueness of this development just really lends itself better to a planned development. I'll show you the area of the subject property. You'll see the area that is in red is the existing Commercial Highway. It encompasses the old Police Annex Building, the old Police Headquarters Building, the Water Resources, the two Water Resources Buildings, and the several buildings that the city has purchased along the west side of South Church Street. Zone Central Business District is the city parking lot that's located on the southeast corner of South Church and East Sevier Street. So the red and yellow areas are what will be rezoned from Commercial Highway and Central Business District to PUD. And the blue areas are kind of some leftover strips of land that will not be a part of this development, that the city is including to rezone to Central Business District and CCO. So overall, the PUD is about 7.4 acres, and there are a variety of uses that Mr. Taylor will go through in just a moment. I will mention that we had a neighborhood meeting on this request just last night. It was a relatively short neighborhood meeting, as neighborhood meetings go, just about 35, 40 minutes long. It was at Fire Station 4. Probably about 15 to 20 interested parties there to listen to Mr. Taylor and Mr. Klein's presentation went well. I think most of the folks who were there really just wanted to learn about the project, ask a few general questions, and it seemed to have, it seemed to be, from the folks who were there, they seemed relatively supportive of the project and were excited about it, I would even say. We do recommend that you schedule a public hearing for this zoning request, also for December the 6th, and I believe I'd like to invite Mr. Taylor up to the podium just to go, to briefly go over the proposed project, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Matthew. I think I'll just concentrate on this one particular slide if we can get that to the big TVs.
If the cable department could go back to the podium, please.
There we go. So I know at least our council people have seen this several times. The body of the presentation is pretty much the same. It's went through several renditions, but I'll start at the intersection of Vine and Broad. And so this is where we have proposed a hotel to be located. We have set forth in our development agreement with the city the classification or level of hotel that goes there, so we're currently in discussions or negotiations with a boutique brand from Hilton called Tapestry. We don't have anything signed, but they have expressed interest in, there's 115 or 125-room hotel at that location. They're very excited about the entire project, especially in conjunction with what the city is doing across the street at Town Creek. As we move to the east and south, this building, we have termed kind of our condo building. Here, we will do at least 80 condominiums and up to a maximum of 100, and that'll really be determined during the pre-sale, once we start the financing portion of the project. That will wrap a four-story parking garage that you see kind of in the lighter color right behind the blue, and then the building itself will completely wrap that garage except for the backside that'll face the city parking garage. And then as we move further east, this building will be for lease residential as well as the building across the street on the parking lot. And so again, this building will be completely wrapped, that parking garage. This building will have parking on the lower level, and then all the residential and commercial above. I'll start to work back the other way. We're gonna move WGNS to this corner right there. That will actually be the first thing that we would do with the project because WGNS, their lights can't be off for long, and so we've gotta build them a new building, move them across the street, and then flip their switch back on. Once that would happen, then we would come back to the main block and begin demolition of the remainder of the buildings and then start vertical construction on the parking garages. Those would be the first things to get built, simply because of the way the structures are put together. I will say that anything with this different shade on the bottom level is first-floor commercial, so we're envisioning restaurants and retail there. We've outlined the allowed uses inside the book. We've also outlined or outlined some prohibited uses such as vape shops, liquor stores, beer and tobacco, I think maybe a pain clinic. So we want the right clientele, the right tenants for the development itself. We'll have two access points on to Broad Street. We have one here, which will continue to go back to City Hall's lower-level entrance, and then we'll have another one here that'll come in for the hotel drop-off as well as entrance to this parking garage. We'll also maintain entrance off of Vine Street to come into the city's upper-floor parking garage there as well. Most of our amenities are gonna be internal to the building, so they'll be secure and private to those residents, but we do have an outdoor pool planned at this location and then kind of this central, I'll call it a central green at this location. We do have a third access I failed to mention here. That's really more for a service delivery or emergency services entrance that'll come in off Broad. It would not be entrance that everyday users would be accessing. We'll also be doing improvements on Church Street to add turn lanes. We'll also improve pedestrian signal facilities that we disturb there. And then we're also going to realign the intersection of Broad and Vine to take that nasty angle out. You know, today it basically forms a triangle from both sides. We're gonna square that up, true that up, and make that a much better alignment there. All the buildings are four stories. We have proposed that the condominium building may go to five if we do the 100 units, and then the hotel, if we have a high enough room count, that could be a five-story building as well. Inside the pattern book, you'll see we've had some questions about how the heights of the buildings relay to downtown. I think we've got our cross-section in here, yes. And so you can see on the right, this is City Hall and the Cupola. All of our buildings will be below that, simply grade of the ground really helps us there, so our buildings won't be blocking that view to the courthouse or to City Hall as we come down Church Street. I think other than that, I think I've hit all the high points. Be happy to answer any questions. I've got Mr. Mark Klein, the architect, as well as Mr. John Harney, who's working with the development team as well.
So I know that council members know the answer to this question, but I don't. Is there just one developer involved, or is there different developers involved depending on what building is in question?
We have one developer involved. The hotel piece, that may wind up being built by the hotel person itself, but in our development agreement, we have set forth very stringent timeline requirements for each of these buildings. Essentially, we're paying for the sands of One East, kind of how it stalled out. At any time, if we're stalled, if we're not making progress for a certain amount of time, the city can either take the property back or at least come knock on the door and say, hey, what's going on? Need to get in gear. We've also got very specific milestones for completions. We have projected to be completely done with the construction in 2027. I forget which month, but inside of 2027. And so that, essentially, once we get started, there will have to be continuous activity on the property.
And you may not know the answer to this, but somebody that's here, the opening of the creek, is that gonna happen at the same time, or?
So if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the contract for the contractor has to be assigned by the end of '24 because of some federal money guidelines, and I think it all has to be spent and completed by the end of '26. Does that sound right?
I just, I think this is gonna be great.
I will say the pedestrian bridge, I didn't hit on that. The city has already obtained, I think it's a million, million and a half dollars' worth of grants on that to start that design. This project's not doing the design or responsible for the construction, but I think the city is interested in our input to make sure that our project and that work together, both from an aesthetic standpoint but also a functionality standpoint. Like, we kind of have some visions of, you know, maybe a nice restaurant that's gonna interact with that side of it there. We obviously care about what our front door's gonna look like. We keep calling this the Bridge Park. I think is what we've been calling it, but we will be working together on that. I think Mr. Blomley was right. I felt like everybody received the project well last night. I felt like it was mainly about learning about the project. Had several representatives from Yard Cell there, as well as Greenhouse Ministries. Ms. Sullivan, who owns CIA on the other side of Broad Street, was there. So really, just local business owners wanting to get educated, and I think that's why it was a short meeting, so.
And Mr. McKnight did send it out to Main Street, and Main Street distributed it to their stakeholders. So we did urge Mr. Taylor to cast a wide net for that neighborhood meeting, and we'll cast a wide net again for the public hearing, wider than our ordinance prescribed. But despite the fact that it was a very, very wide net that was cast for that neighborhood meeting last night, it was, attendance was relatively low.
I think, I believe we sent about 300 letters, if I remember right, and as Mr. Blomley said, about 15-ish people, and probably, that really amounted to probably seven or eight businesses.
Well, it looks like a very exciting project and a huge investment in our city.
Yeah.
And I'm excited about it. Can't wait to see it.
With that, I'll make a motion for a public hearing on December the 6th.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Nay.
Chair Jones.
Aye. The motion passes with five ayes, one nay. Okay? All right. Next, we are moving on to proposed amendment to the city zoning ordinance related to regulations for electric vehicles and pertaining to the following sections. Section 2 definitions, Section 26, off-street parking, queuing, and loading, and end notes for Chart 2, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios. The city of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant, and Ms. Noel, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This is actually my first item I've been presenting in my 10 years with the city, so I'm normally...
Well, you've been up here a lot already.
Yes, I'm normally the resource.
But we're happy to have you presenting.
But not normally introducing an item. So this zoning ordinance amendment deals with electric vehicles. We've been seeing an increase in demand for electric vehicle parking stations, so we felt that we needed to put some regulations in place for those. felt that we needed to put some regulations in place for those charging units. In general, there are three types of EV installations. You have EV capable, EV ready, and EV installed. EV installed is just what it sounds like. You basically have your unit installed. EV capable is basically you have an electric design, you meet all the space requirements, there's conduit in the ground, but no wire is pulled. And then EV ready is the wire is pulled, just ready to install that unit. One of the things we are asking for with this amendment is that all new developments install 10% of their parking for, and when I say new developments, I mean commercial and multifamily and industrial. Single-family is not included in this. That they include 10% of their parking to be at least EV capable, meaning that they have the conduit installed but not actually the units or wire, to make sure that they are providing that space in the future for when those units need to be there and when they have the demand. We're seeing a lot of retrofits, and we're working around our ordinance to try to make those fit, and this is a way to try to solve that problem moving forward.
Can I ask you a question before you go any further?
Sure.
So by doing that, though, that, those parking spaces that would be quote-unquote dedicated, they count towards their parking requirements, right?
This would be included in...
Yeah, okay.
Yes. So it would be 10% of your parking, but it doesn't...
Doesn't count against them.
Doesn't count against them.
Yeah, all right.
We're also asking that another 10% meet those space requirements but don't necessarily have the conduit installed. And we're also including design standards for those EV units with this ordinance amendment as well. The Planning Commission will need to discuss this item, and we are asked that you schedule a public hearing for December 6th.
So I have another question. I was just looking at this the other day. So is this mimicking any other place or any other ordinance that you might have looked at in other places, or this is just kind of off the top of our head?
This was, I did a lot of research of other ordinances...
Yeah.
...across the country. I honestly don't, did not find any in Tennessee, so this might be the first one in Tennessee to require any type of EV parking. I don't know if anything's been passed in the last couple months in other cities...
Right.
But I know when I started my research in the spring, there weren't no others in Tennessee, but I looked at Atlanta, I think Columbus, Ohio, some places in Washington State, just various cities across the country.
Okay.
And was 10% the kind of normal range for what they did?
Some of the larger cities required a lot more than 10%. So we're trying to scale that back a little bit with our community.
Okay.
And just some kudos to Ms. Noel. She did a lot of research on this, and it's still a pretty new, a pretty new topic, and it's evolving the way that cities are regulating it, and so she did a great job researching it and putting together the draft ordinance, I think.
Any other questions or comments before we schedule this for a public hearing?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for December 6th.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, thank you, Ms. Noel. All right, our next item is proposed amendment to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to miscellaneous revisions to the following sections. Section 2 definitions, Section 6 amendments, Section 7 site plan review, Section 9 standards for special permit uses, Section 24 overlay district regulations, Article 6, CCO, city core overlay district, Section 25 temporary and accessory structures and uses, Section 26, off-street parking, queuing, and loading, Section 28, non-conformities, Chart 1, uses permitted by zoning district, including Chart 1 end notes, and Chart 2, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios, including Chart 2 end notes. The city of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
And we could add a few more sections on that before the public hearing, just to make it all that much longer to read. No, I won't spend too much time on this. We had a great workshop meeting yesterday. Appreciate all y'all's input. Mr. McKnight, Ms. Smith, Mr. Hankins, and I already have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon to continue going over it and looking at some of the items that y'all raised yesterday. So I would, rather than going over what we spent two hours on yesterday, I would just say that staff recommends that you schedule a public hearing for December the 6th, and we will continue to work on fine-tuning it between now and then to have it in as close to final form as possible for y'all at the public hearing.
All right.
I want to make one comment. I thought it was really neat that y'all invited engineers that deal with this day-to-day, and I know y'all work with them day-to-day. I just felt like that that was a very good ask, and whoever decided to do that, I appreciate that happening, so.
We really appreciate their, and I'm glad Mr. Taylor and Mr. McGuire aren't here to hear me compliment them, but we really appreciate their participation in the process. They're good partners.
A lot of good input, for sure.
Yep.
All right. And as you can tell, we wore Ms. Smith out yesterday, and she's feeling a little under the weather today, I guess, so hopefully she'll be back.
Make a motion, we set this for a public hearing on December the 6th.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. That concludes the new business section, and so we have staff reports and other business.
Just a reminder about the training coming up on Friday morning from 8:00 to 12:00. You can either attend live, virtually live, or Tappa will be sending out a link to watch it after the fact, and make sure to get that link to you if you're not able to attend live.
Okay.
And other than that, just happy Thanksgiving.
Any other business? And if not, we stand adjourned.